You are muted. You can mute or unmute yourself by pressing star six.
Okay, we are live. You may proceed.
Thank you. Uh, good afternoon. Uh, yeah, we are afternoon. Okay, good afternoon. Uh, I'm Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez, Chair of Public Safety, and welcome to the special
This call is now being recorded.
... safety committee for Thursday, June twenty-sixth, 2020. Uh, also want to thank my colleagues, uh, Councilmember, Vice Chair Councilmember Mitchell Farrell, Councilmember Rue, and John Lee that have joined us, uh, for this afternoon's meeting. Um, and, uh, Mr. Clark, if you could please call the Rue and also announce the common information for members of the public who wish to see some items on today's agenda.
Will do. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Farrell? President. Councilmember Bouscaino? Councilmember Rue?
President.
Councilmember Lee?
President.
Very good. Essentially, the audio for this meeting is broadcast live on the Internet at www.lacity.org, government, all meetings, council committee meetings. A live audio can also be heard at air code two-one-three, six-two-one, CITY for Metro, and eight-one-eight, nine-oh-four, nine-four-five-zero Valley, and air code three-ten, four-seven-one, CITY West Side, and air code three-ten, five-four-seven, CITY for the San Pedro area. Members of the public who'd like to offer public comment on the items listed on the agenda should call one, six-six-nine, two-five-four, five-two, five-two, and use meeting ID number one, six, one, nine, seven, five, eight, six, nine, six, and then press the pound key. Press the pound key again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted to the meeting, press star nine to request to speak. Uh, please note that this can only be accessed by way of telephone, not online. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark, and, uh, we do have, uh, a few individuals that are in the queue, so we will go ahead and open up, uh, public comments. Hello, Speaker, please say... Okay. Good afternoon, Speaker. Would you please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on? Hello, Speaker. Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
My name is Camilo. I'd like to speak on items one through four and eighteen.
Okay, you have, uh, two minutes, and your time starts now.
Thank you. Uh, regardless to, I mean, in regard to having the LAPD present a verbal report on investigating, reviewing, and disciplining itself, I think that's outrageous to even consider them reliable and being to police themselves when they've proven that they don't care about the citizenship of this country in countless videos of them bootlicking protesters and in the police protective least actions in terms of antagonizing protesters online. Uh, I just in general think that it's outrageous, and I wouldn't mind this, uh, city being, uh, placed against, uh, against, I mean, under another federal hold. That would be great at the start. Um, oh, skipping over on item two. On item three, I would, uh, request the council to please, uh, remove the LAPD's oversight process at all over its treatments of protesters and to instead, I would urge, uh, the council to immediately move to defund the police and also explore all legal, uh, remedies, uh, that they could take on behalf of the citizenship of L.A. in terms of actually holding police to account. Uh, as far as item four, I believe that, uh, of course, all these vehicles should be released immediately. They should have never been impounded in the first place, and there should be disciplinary action taken against Chief Moore, which should be fired anyways, uh, for even allowing this to exist. And on to item eighteen, uh, it's absolutely bullshit to think that you guys can place the community in a room, uh, with police and think, I mean, uh, there's City of L.A. versus Nicholson, or Nicholson versus City of L.A. where the police shot into an alley full of kids, and you guys think that through our eyes program could at all be effective. Uh, I yield my time, fuck you all for being pieces of shit, and I hope we vote you all out, or even recall you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, next caller. Good afternoon, caller.
Hi, my name-
What, you, uh, which, your name, please, and which items you'd like to speak on?
My name is Adam Smith, and I'd like to speak on, um, one through three, uh, and then eighteen and thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and general public comment.
Uh, no, you have thirty-two minutes for those items. Thank you.
All right.
You have two minutes?
All right. Um, so... I'm gonna skip ahead to the reappointment of Ms. Eileen Decker to the Board of Police Commissioners. As someone that attends those meetings regularly, I have nothing personal against Ms. Decker, but as the president of a so-called civilian oversight board, she does a terrible job. Um, she regularly shuts down speakers, like the sister of Daniel Hernandez, who called in on Tuesday to speak. She cut her off. Um, and as someone with a history as a U.S. attorney and as a deputy mayor for Homeland Security and Public Safety under Garcetti, she isn't a civilian that should be overseeing the police department. She's literally a cop. Um, um, so much to talk about in so little time. There's three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars being donated to the police for recruitment. You should reject all donations going to the police department right now, but I know that there's a lot of cops on this board, so that probably won't help. Um, this motion, number eighteen, Rodriguez, Officer Bouscaino, relative to expanding the Through Our Eyes program in the Community Safety Partnership, that shouldn't happen. Community Safety Partnership is a community policing program. These community policing programs are based in counterinsurgency to put more officers in black and brown communities to expand contacts between LAPD and community members. We need less contacts. More contacts are always gonna be more violence and death at the hands of the LAPD. Um... Joan Brody shouldn't have a job. So much.
Thank you very-
Okay, any time.
Greetings. It's Eric Previn, and I'll give a comment on all available items.
Okay, you have two minutes, Mr. Previn. Go ahead.
Yeah, I have to echo some of the comments about Eileen Decker. This is not what I would describe as a impartial, uh, you know, trier of fact or anything, frankly. And the coziness with Mayor Garcetti while working for him and then as a U.S. attorney, you know, it raises questions. How has it gotten so far along? Now we have an FBI investigation, but how has it gotten so far when the U.S. Attorney's Office has been in L.A. for so long? The answer is that it's been populated by people who are part of the big public safety cluster of which you sit. And it does, they don't wanna investigate one another, so therefore we have to do something else, which is get rid of the bad officers. Now, this is something that's unpleasant. I don't like people to say all cops are bad, because I don't believe that, but keeping the bad cops is beyond pernicious, Mr. O'Farrell. And so, you know, the use of force, uh, presentation that's gonna come up is a sequencing problem, because how are we supposed to give a meaningful comment about something we're so concerned about, of which have written numerous articles about the use of TASER and the crazy county of Los Angeles that still doesn't have body cams, but manages to have in their custody manual the opportunity to arc a TASER? That means show somebody fifty thousand volts prior to getting them to comply with getting up from the list. This is an inhumane kind of, this is like cracking a whip. And this is the company that sold us seventy million dollars worth of body cams, and Mitch Inlander and your very cluster stuffed four-thousand-four-hundred TASERS under the jump seat of the truck with the body cam supposedly to help us clean up the kind of brutality that we've been seeing, and we haven't been seeing, uh, cleaning it up. We've been seeing horrible video, but beautiful video of the public who say, "We see you," and the best defense for that kind of brutality is the people of Los Angeles coming out and saying, "Hey, look, our cell phones work. We don't need to license the opportunity to record one another constantly from Axon, the people who make the TASER."
Mr. Previn, explain his act. Good afternoon, Speaker. Could you please state your name and which items you'd like to speak on?
Yes, I'd like to speak on items three and sixteen and give general public comment.
Oh, you have two minutes there. What's your name?
Zach Sherwin.
Thank you.
Um, okay, so regarding item three, um, and the reappointment of Eileen Decker. So, I attend the police commission meetings on a regular basis, um, both the virtual ones and the ones, uh, in person, and I've observed the police commission often enough to know that they are essentially a rubber stamp for what the LAPD wants to do. And the outpouring of community outrage on those Zoom calls over the past few weeks, when the commission has had its meetings, because they're canceling them all the time, it is clear that the body is failing to meet this moment and this movement. And Eileen Decker is its leader, and the city is furious with the way the police commission is handling themselves. So, you know, she shouldn't be reappointed, and somebody else should be put on that board in her stead who is going to, you know, respond in a meaningful way to this community. As far as item sixteen, uh, and this, uh, fifty-thousand-dollar-and-eight-cent, glad we included that detail, uh, grant, um, for popsicles and small freezers, uh, it just makes me shudder with horror to think of these cops getting near kids. Um, when these people, when these kids, you know, become, when black kids become adults, they become targets for this toxic lethal LAPD. Um, also, if you're gonna keep this super problematic program on the books, call it Pops From Pops, From Pops From Cops, because calling it Pops, never mind. This is a clever point that I'm, I'm not trying to be lighthearted here. This is serious stuff, and it's not a time for jokes. Um, the Community Safety Partnership is super messed up. Anything related to the Los Angeles Police Department should not be getting more money at this point. Um, that concludes my remarks.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Speaker. Could you please state your name and the item you'd like to speak on?
Sure. My name is Gina Viola, and I have comments on items one, two, three, eight, thirteen through sixteen, and eighteen.
So, you have two minutes. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I will go in order. Items eight, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen are more funding for the LAPD. Clearly something that the community has been clamoring does not happen, and it's, it's funding and revenue source for the LAPD that is less regulated than other monies they receive, so it's time for us to start diving deeper into stuff like that as well. Item two, I have to echo other comments that have been made about Ms. Decker. It's nothing personal. I do think that she was trained under the leadership of Steve Soboroff, and I have written numerous emails to the mayor, to my council member, about Steve Soboroff and his outward racism in the police commission room, week after week after week, and she has very much picked up the baton where he's left it. I would urge you to find somebody else to run the board. Um, item number three, asking the LAPD to investigate itself is useless, and also the verbiage about the civil unrest in L.A. being about George Floyd is really troubling, because it's not about George Floyd. It's about the police violence that happens right here in Los Angeles. So, it's important that you start recognizing that and not just make it about Minnesota. Um, item number eighteen, Through Our Eyes, anything CSP, Community Safety, it's a force multiplier. Predpul and laser were also force multipliers, which have been found to be very racist policies. Our communities do not need force multipliers. We need life-affirming resources. Extension, extensive coverage in the media is a bogus claim of success. It just is. The CSP is a job creation program for consultants and academics, and more money for cops. So, please, item eighteen, no. As for item number one, use of force, I was on the Metro call today and for a moment on the homeless call today. I heard community member after community member clamoring to get rid of the police in those places. You have been brutalizing community members. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Go ahead. One more? Good afternoon, Speaker. Would you please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on? Hello?
Hello, hello?
Hi, Speaker. Please state your name and the-
My name is Camilo. Actually, I already spoke. I was just listening in on the call again, but, uh, I would like to, uh, echo everybody's comments on item three-
Thank you, okay.
-and about Eileen Decker.
Thank you very much. Sorry about that. Okay, uh, colleagues, that concludes, uh, general public comment, and, uh, so with that, I'd like to recommend that we take the following items off the instance, uh, items two, three, six through ten, and twelve through seventeen. Mr. Clark, do you wanna take the-
Yes, um, let's wait for the call here through the board. Uh, Councilmember Rodriguez?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Farrell?
Aye.
Councilmember Rue?
Aye.
And Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Very good.
Thank you. So now that brings us to item number one, a verbal presentation. Mr. Clark, if you could please call that, uh-
Certainly. Item number one, discussion item, Los Angeles Police Department to present a verbal report in regards to the investigative review and disciplinary process for use of force incidents.
Thank you. Colleagues, we all recognize that we are in very unique times, both with respect to a pandemic and some long systemic conversations that are, uh, that are due and have continued to be ongoing here in the city of Los Angeles, but are currently at the forefront of the hearts and minds of people across this country. Creating systemic change requires us to take a very deep introspective look at our policies and our processes. This is about creating a culture of accountability and transparency, which are essential to rebuilding the public's trust and confidence. A culture shift in our police department begins with holding officers accountable to one another and setting clear expectations. It's also important for this body and the public to have a deeper understanding of LAPD's process to investigate, review, and adjudicate officers involved with use of force incidents. No matter the level or severity, any use of force incident impacts the public's trust with the department. Understanding this process will help us get to the root of the issue and begin the necessary work towards the systemic change that we are all seeking, uh, during, during these very difficult and evolving times. With that, I'd like to, uh, thank, uh, Commander Mike Wimpunis, Assistant Director of Operations, and Commander Tim Northquist from, uh, First Investigation Division to present on, uh, on this item. Gentlemen, thank you for joining us.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Honorable councilmembers and other participants. I'm Commander Tim Northquist, and the commanding officer of Force Investigation Group of the Los Angeles Police Department. Joining me remotely is Commander Wimpunis, who is the assistant and the director of the Office of Operations. Uh, we'll begin our verbal report with an explanation of our two types of use of force investigations. The first type is called a categorical. The second type is non-categorical. In the sense categorical investigations involve deadly force by officers, non-categorical involve anything less than deadly force. I will explain categorical investigations, and then Commander Wimpunis will explain non-categorical. So, to begin with, categorical is anything that involves use of deadly force by an officer. This would include officer-involved shootings, whether a person is hit or not, any time a person dies while in police custody, any use of force in which they can compromise, any intentional head strike with an impact weapon or device, and an unintentional discharge of a firearm. Categorical use of force investigations are conducted by Force Investigation Division, or what we call FID. FID was established in two thousand and four, in circumference with the Federal Consent Decree. The Consent Decree required several steps to ensure-
Someone muted you. Press star six to unmute.
... investigative investigations, as well as independent oversight, and those steps remain. Uh, now, I wanna make sure that we're very clear on how much, um, there is independent civilian oversight from both the Office of the Inspector General and also from the DA's office. This oversight begins on day one with their response to the crime scene, and it continues all the way through the entire investigative process, review, and adjudication. So, a categorical investigation begins immediately after an officer uses deadly force. The first step is for, the first responding supervisor to immediately separate the officers to ensure that they cannot discuss the incident with other officers. The supervisor also clips their body-worn cameras. Experienced investigators from FID respond to the scene any time of the day and night, and they begin their investigation, including the collection of evidence and the interviewing of witnesses. While at the scene, FID investigators review body-worn videos, in-car videos, and any other video that might have been involved in the incident. The crime scene is documented using photographs as well as the three-D scanners. FID investigators are assisted with personnel from Forensic Science Division, Technical Investigation Division, and these include the firearms analysis unit, the seriology and DNA unit, trace analysis unit, latent prints, uh, any and the other resources that we might need. FID investigators conduct recorded interviews of the involved officers usually before the end of the officer's shift. The involved officers are immediately assigned to administrative functions until returned to field duty by the chief of police. During this time, officers are instructed to have the first of three sessions with a police psychologist. So, now let me talk about the review process. The first step of the review process is a seventy-two-hour briefing of the incident for the chief of police and command staff. The purpose of this briefing is to address issues that require immediate department attention. At the conclusion of this briefing, the chief of police makes a determination as to whether or not the officer may return to field duties. The chief's decision is based on a review of the incident and the recommendations of the officer's commanding officer, as well as a police psychologist. The police chief also authorizes the release of the names of the involved officers at that time for transparency. Prior to returning to field duty, each involved officer must complete what's called a general training update. This is conducted by Training Division, and it contains six mandatory topics. Those topics are use of force policy, reverence for human life, tactical de-escalation, command and control, equipment requirements, reality-based training in a force opulation, force option simulator. Additional training subjects can also be included if appropriate. Within thirty-five days of the incident, the department releases a critical incident community briefing, including videos related to the investigation. Within thirty days, FID provides a briefing of the investigation to the Office of the Inspector General, as well as the Justice System Integrity Division of the DA's office. The commanding officer of Professional Standards Bureau is also provided a briefing, and he has a direct report to the chief of police. During these briefings, in the role of oversight, the Office of the Inspector General, as well as the DA's office, is able to raise any concerns about any aspect of the investigation for which they would like additional information. FID is required to complete the investigation within eight months. Once FID is completed with the investigation, Critical Incident Review Division of the Police Department conducts a thorough review of the investigation and the facts of the case. They prepare the case for a use-of-force review board, which will identify any issues or concerns or potential policy violations. So, now, the adjudication process. The first step of the adjudication process is to convene a use-of-force review board. This is chaired by the Assistant Chief, who is the director of Office of Support Services. There are four additional members of the board, which include three senior command staff members and a peer member at the same rank of the involved office, the involved officer. The Office of the Inspector General is also present for this board and asks questions and can raise any concerns. The board reviews the facts of the incident and renders the recommended findings as to whether or not the officer's actions were in compliance with policy in the areas of tactics, drawing and exhibiting of a firearm, and the use of force. The recommended findings of the use-of-force review board are then provided to the chief of police. The chief of police either adopts or overrules the recommendations of the use-of-force review board and then presents those recommendations to the Board of Police Commissioners. The Board of Police Commissioners also receives a report from the Office of the Inspector General, which has their recommendations. The Board of Police Commissioners then deliberate the facts and make a final adjudication of the findings. Within ten days of the decision of the Board of Police Commissioners, we submit a report to the Justice System Integrity Division of the DA's office for filing consideration. We also have a mechanism in place to submit a report to the DA's office sooner if they request it. This is part of our thirty-day briefing to the DA's office. Now, the disciplinary process. If the Board of Police Commissioners's final findings include any out-of-policy determinations, then it's up to the chief of police to administer discipline. The chief may administer discipline in the range of training up to twenty-two days, or the chief may direct the officer to a Board of Rights hearing for removal. During a Board of Rights hearing, the facts of the case are presented to the board, which renders a final penalty decision. The chief then cannot impose any discipline in excess of the decision of the Board of Rights. Madam Chair, this concludes my verbal report as far as categorical investigations. Would you like Commander Wimpunis now to present his verbal report on non-categorical, or are there first questions regarding categoricals?
Um, I think we'll go ahead and go to non-categorical and then open up for questions with the colleagues, but also for members of the public that, uh, are listening in. Uh, I, I do know that the use of force policy is available online as well, correct?
Yes.
And so, if they, if they wanna pick that out, they can, uh, secure that information online at the LAPD, uh, website.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll go with Commander Wimpunis now, then.
Okay, Madam Chair and councilmembers, good afternoon. Um, this is Commander Wimpunis from the Office of Operations. Uh, one of the things I think I wanna put in context, uh, before I start talking about the non-cats, is the number of public contacts. You know, in two thousand and nineteen, uh, the Los Angeles Police Department had a total of one-point-six-nine-two billion contacts, and of those contacts, um, there were eighty-two-thousand arrests, and two-thousand-three-hundred-seventy-three of the one-point-six-nine-two contacts resulted in the use of force, so that's approximately point-one-four percent. So, I just wanted to, to, to set the context with the amount of folks that we've come in contact with and the number of non-categorical use of force that had occurred. And twenty-six of those resulted in officer-involved shootings, in which Commander Northquist, um, covered. But I think it's important for everyone to understand what the definition is of a non-cat use of force, and a non-cat use of force is a reportable, um, non-cat use of force is defined as an incident in which any on-duty department employee or off-duty employee whose occupation as a department employee is a factor uses a less lethal control device or physical force to compel a person to comply with the employee's direction, overcome resistance of a person during an arrest or detention, or defend an individual from and violent, any violent action by another person resulting in injury or complaint of injury. Now, our non-cat use of forces are broken up into two different levels, which I will, um, explain to you. You know, a non-cat use of force shall be reported as a level-one incident under the following circumstances. An allegation of unauthorized forces made regarding the force used by a department employee, or the force used results in a serious injury such as a broken bone, dislocation, an injury requiring sutures that does not rise to the level of a cat- an injury requiring sutures that does not rise to the level of a categorical Use of Force, or the injuries to the person upon whom the force was used are inconsistent with the amount or type of force reported by the involved department employee, or the accounts of the incident provided by witnesses, and/or the subject of the Use of Force substantially conflict with the involved employee's account. All other reportable non-cat Use of Force incidents that do not meet the Level One criteria shall be reported as Level Two incidents, to include the use of an impact device, or less lethal munitions with hits. If the investigating supervisor is unable to verify the seriousness of- of an injury or complaint of injury, it shall be reported as a Level One incident. If the injury requires admission to a hospital, or at the direction of the Chief of Police, the incident becomes a categorical Use of Force incident, and Force Investigation will assume investigative responsibility. In two thousand and nineteen, two thousand one hundred fifty-four non-categorical Use of Force incidents were classified as Level Two incidents. That's about ninety-three percent of the, um, amount of force incidents that occurred. And now, I'll explain a little bit about what goes into the different types of investigation. So this would be our supervisor who is responding to a non-cat Use of Force, um, incident, and this is what the requirement is of, um, our supervisor who responds. They're to collect and preserve all appropriate evidence, and canvass the scene, locate witnesses when appropriate. This is a big one for Level One. Audio record non-department witness statements. Audio record statement from the subject involved in the non-categorical Use of Force. Conduct independent interviews with all involved witnessing department employees. Document, photograph injuries, and obtain medical treatment information of involved suspects or employees. Acquire photographs of the incident scene. Review all video, audio, to include body worn video, digital in-car video, or digital in-car video, as well as all other video that is- is at the surrounding location of where the incident occurred. Moving into Level Two incidents, non-categorical Use of Force investigations, always the same except supervisors are not required to record non-department witness statements, and supervisors are not required to document verbatim statements by suspects or witnesses. Once that is complete, that investigation then gets submitted to the area watch commander and the training coordinator, who then shall review the completed investigation and make the appropriate adjudication recommendations. The watch commander evaluates whether the applications of force used were objectively reasonable and consistent with actual reported by involved department employees. They shall also ensure all relevant tactical actions, Use of Force applications, and policy issues are addressed. Lastly, the watch commander shall ensure all supervisors at scene during the non-cat Use of Force were interviewed and evaluated, um, for each of their actions. When the watch commander, it completes that, the area division commanding officer, um, has fourteen days to provide recommendations regarding tactics, as well as the applications of force. So, the- the area divisional patrol captain should become aware of this incident, and then provide timely recommendations onto the incident that occurred. The area division CO shall solicit the input of the area division training coordinator to evaluate the totality of the in- the incident. Additionally, at our disposal, we have our subject matter expert- experts in the area, um, tr- training division, um, in regards to Use of Force. Once that is done, we give each area approximately forty-five days to re- to complete their investigation, and submit their investigation to the Bureau, where you have a Bureau Chief or Commander that looks at all of the things that I described, and then they in turn review all body worn, all evidence, and come up with their own recommendations, either consistent with the area, or they make additional recommendations, or require further investigation. The final adjudicators of non-cat Uses of Force lies with the Director of the Office of Support Services, in this term Assistant Chief Grimala. For non-categorical Use of Force investigations, that is usually designated to the Captain in charge of Critical Incident Review Division, who then reviews all evidence, as I stated. So there's multiple levels of review, and if something is missing in between any of that, then the Captain then could resubmit or kick back the investigation for additional type of information. The discipline side of this, there's- there's a few things that occur. You know, uh, these investigations can either be a no-action, incident debrief, informal meeting, divisional training. If it reaches the level of where there is misconduct, a personnel complaint could be initiated, you know, which could lead to, uh, possible termination. It just depends on the severity of these investigations. Just for incidents, uh, I just wanted to- so, right now, we're currently in the process, there's still open two thousand nineteen cases from the end of the year. Um, for instance, in two thousand eighteen, we had a total of two thousand one hundred twenty-six non- non-categorical uses of force. We had about, uh, a hundred and twenty-nine of those, about point five percent where there was disapproval in regard to, um, the tactics, um, a- as such. So, I believe these investigations are looked at thoroughly, there's multiple levels of review, and I'd be happy to answer any questions in regards to the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Commander. Um, just to go back to the non-cat, uh, investigation you mentioned for twenty eight- uh, twenty eighteen, you said, of the, how many thousands were there?
So, so in two thousand in- in nineteen, so in two thousand nineteen, there was- so there was two thousand three hundred seventy-three Use of Force incidents that occurred. And tho- and those include officer-involved shootings, which would be investigated, um, through, uh, Commander Norquist's, um, for FID.
Sure. And then, but of those, no, I was talking about specifically the non-cat numbers. So when you talk about those incidents, uh, you indicated a hundred and twenty-nine disapproval?
Right.
Of the twenty-eighteen members, you said?
Yeah, so basically, I- I just wanted to give, so basically, in two thousand in- in eighteen, so we don't have the two thousand nineteen totals in regard to the administrative disappro- approvals in regards to the nineteen cases. We're still waiting for those to be at their final, you know, so they become final once C- C, uh, um, Critical Incident Review Division adjudicates them. But for instance, in two thousand and eighteen, there was a hundred and twenty-nine administrative disapprovals out of two thousand one hundred twenty-six cases, and that's for eighteen.
Okay, that's only eighteen, okay. Um, and so we have a, obviously, the department is tracking, uh, the pattern in history. I mean, I guess, part of what instantly comes to my mind, and, and, you know, I recognize the- the process in as it's, uh, as it's involved, how, or how- how has that process for the non-cat evolved over the course of the years in terms of the investigative review? And I- and I'm asking this question with the purpose of understanding that many times when we talk about, uh, the public's engagement, we're probably talking about more often this type of engagement that perhaps is causing, uh, much of the angst of what the public is, is, uh, you know, revolved around the public outcry. And so, my question is, how has that process evolved, uh, been reformed, and, uh, reviewed for improvement, uh, just as we're doing, for example, uh, around the conversations with, uh, CalGone's database? How has this process, uh, evolved and been reformed, uh, with respect to the review process? Uh, and that- that's my first question. The second question is, uh, how has, you know, amongst those, uh, a hundred and twenty-nine that were identified in twenty eighteen, uh, what has been a pattern of behavior, if any, amongst officers that have perhaps been investigated, uh, with previous non-cat engagements, uh, in either preceding years, or have there been, uh, any that have repeated in twenty nineteen?
So, I- I think the first thing i- is, you know, is the use of body worn, um, and digital in-car video. Um, that- that has allowed, uh, the- the department, the community, to get a look into what is actually taking place out in the field. There's real-time information that can be viewed, whereas in- in the past, we were reliant upon statements, the possible video that you may obtain from a business to where an incident occurred. But the body worn video, I believe, is- is, you know, is- is the right ticket that has allowed, um, for categoricals, for non-categoricals, to really give department managers the direct insight into what is taking place. And then that, along with, um, de-escalation, um, you know, the- the- the understanding of trying to, you know, having, you know, proper planning, and assessments, and resources, and- and really coming over the past few years to an understanding of utilizing those techniques. Um, officers understand that body worn is in place, so, uh, things are being done differently, because body worn is factored in- factored in in the adjudications. The- the community knows that. Um, officers, I believe, at this point, really have a good grasp of that, and that, it creates, you know, it takes longer for these investigations to be, um, completed, but it also, the indebtedness of it, the- the amount of scrutiny that goes into it can be reviewed at multiple levels, as I described, which has really allowed us to find problematic behavior. Um, what I haven't mentioned yet is our teams. You know, there- there's a risk manager r- report that any time an officer is involved in a non-categorical Use of Force, and say they do have an administrative disapproval on their tactics, or the Use of Force was found out of policy, that is, um, um, a record that is with that employee for the actions that they were involved in, that then can be monitored and triggered, and, you know, with, you know, as I say, continual audits and things like that, that supervisors are being trained to identify at-risk employees. You know, we have a whole, uh, risk management system where we have officers that have a systemic history of, um, say, uh, bad tactics, and they've been, um, disapproved multiple times. They can go into a remat hearing where they can potentially be removed from the field as well. So, um, the scrutiny has gotten a lot better, and, you know, the body worn, as I said, is- is, which is allowing us to- to get in and to really cross-check officer's statements with arrest reports to what actually is happening in the field. So I think that, as- as time-consuming as it takes to do that, our investigations are, um, are more accurate, and, um, it- it allows us to then continually train that employee as well when we identify at-risk behavior.
So, and, uh, in- in, you know, as you referenced, there were- there have been incidents where, uh, you know, officers have been in, uh, mo- multiple, uh, disapproval. Um, what- what are the, uh, what's the process in managing that? What would that, I mean, at what point do we say, "We've got a problem"? Uh, you know, what- what does that process look like?
So, you know, uh, so- so just from the non-cat side, and- and- and we see, and we've used the same sort of technique in, uh, with the categoricals, is that if we have an employee that has been involved in, let's just say, um, uh, multiple Use of Force incidents, where we have determined that the tactics have been flawed, I, in theory, we would like to catch that the first time. Um, but that is documented, there's- there's department, there's divisional training, there's department training, and if it got to the point where we have an employee that- that is just not getting it, that's been involved in- in- in Use of Force incidents, they are immediately removed from the field and given non-field assignments, and then in turn, these investigations, when it comes to the discipline, could be referred to a Board of Rights hearing. They could be given significant, uh, suspension days based on- on an incident, and then a- and then a pattern of, um, behavior that, um, that- that has been identified. So when we're looking at the adjudication of an employee involved in a Use of Force, and we find something out of policy, that employee's, um, team's report that has the history of that employee in regards to the Use of Force is evaluated, and then the- then the adjudicating, uh, body, the Captain would- could recommend, as I said, up to termination, you know, well, the Chief would terminate, but up to, um, suspension of duties, removal from field, um, all the way into a, uh, Board of Rights proceeding, because we can't afford to have an employee out in the field that is violating their- their- their power, et cetera. So I don't know if that answered it, or-
Yeah, I mean, I guess, you know, obviously, um, officer-involved shootings, you know, the categorical are the absolute most concerning. Um, but I would say that even some of the patterns could be identified, uh, perhaps earlier with, uh, multiple non-cat offenses. And so, just wondering what might be, you know, what approaches might be taken to identify patterns earlier, uh, and what the process of removal or intervention strategies might be, uh, to remove those officers from the field. You know, and- and again, I'm going to preface all of this by saying, uh, before, you know, I- I know this is going to be said, and I just, I want to get it out there, because the Sheriff Public Safety is someone who reveals the work of, uh, the men and women who understand the privilege and the honor that it is to wear this badge, that unfortunately there are those that have, uh, brought shame to it. And it's those that are, that we are, right now, engaged in the conversation around, uh, you know, actions that we've seen most recently that are, uh, infuriating, to say the least, and, um, and, you know, our responsibility is to hold everyone accountable. Um, there's no limit above that, and so, it- it, with respect to just honing in on that process, and seeing where we could, uh, where we could, uh, you know, uh, reflect changes in that process, uh, that we're hoping to kind of get to a better understanding it, and perhaps, uh, ruling out where some of the, where some of the opportunities for improvement in the process might- might reside. Um, but with that, I'm going to go ahead and allow my colleagues, I'm sure Mr. Oster and Huxton, yeah. So I don't want to monopolize the conversation, but, uh, Commanders, I just want to thank you both, because it's been, and this has been a very helpful conversation for me. Uh, I know, so, Mr. Oster.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and, uh, and yes, uh, thank you, Commander Remkunis, uh, and, uh, Mr. Norquist, for your report. Um, and, uh, so, question, in- in relation, within the context of Use of Force, uh, can you elaborate on how the Use of Deadly Force, Assembly Bill Three Ninety-Two, how that is being implemented, uh, within the LAPD, and how that informs this report, and, uh, how it informs your approach, uh, to minimizing, uh, and- and taking even more seriously the Use of Deadly Force? Can you expand on that within the context of this conversation?
Councilmember Oster, yes, I will address that, um, related to Deadly Force. Um, yes, it, you know, the- the main points of that Assembly Bill are- are the importance of, um, utilizing Deadly Force only if absolutely necessary to defend, uh, against, you know, death or serious bodily injury, but what- what it added was the importance of utilizing other resources, other tactics, de-escalation techniques. And, um, we're very proud of the fact in the LAPD that we feel that we were way ahead of this. Before this Assembly Bill was passed, we had already implemented extensive policies, as well as training, on de-escalation techniques. And as we're evaluating Uses of Force, whether that's a categorical Use of Force, or a non-categorical Use of Force, we make a difference between, um, evaluating the actual Use of Force itself, and then also the tactics. And so, we might find that, uh, an officer's use of the Deadly Force was justified based on the circumstances, but we don't stop there, we evaluate the tactics to determine whether the officer did everything they could to try to minimize the escalation of this event. And that's a significant portion of both our categorical and non-categorical investigations, as well as adjudication.
Uh, thanks, and that's a, it's a new bill, it's a new law, so, uh, what, do you feel that there is additional opportunity in light of this profound movement that we're all experiencing, uh, that is very real, that is to be- to be taken seriously? Um, what- what more might there be to do about this, and then just in general, Use of Force, when you take in the larger context of the Black Lives Matter movement, and all of the testimony about, uh, individuals, uh, who feel that when there's just a routine stop of some sort, that their mission is just to survive being pulled over? I mean, when you hear things like that, that are sincere, and they're honest, from folks, uh, mostly black folks, who really are just in fear, uh, when there's any incident involving the LAPD, how does that inform your-
the LAPD, how does that inform your take on use of force?
Well, you know, we hear, we hear all the comments, we hear all of the concerns, um, and, and we, that's why I say we're very proud of what we feel we have implemented as a department. I've seen Ms. Rhodes is on this, uh, video conference as well, and she's been very influential in providing training on this in terms of the legal issues. Um, she's also provided training for our investigators for how to properly investigate to make sure we've addressed all of the issues of that Assembly Bill. Um, but I can tell you that, um, that's very much a concern for us as well. And I think it's important, uh, for members of the public to, to see the progress that we've made. Um, and by that in particular, I would refer to our statistics regarding deadly force as an example of the progress that we've made. For example, uh, last year, uh, we had fifty-one categorical uses of force. So, in two thousand nineteen, fifty-one. That's eleven less than we had in two thousand eighteen, and it's twenty-two less than our three-year average. Um, I think that that is a direct, a direct re- result of our emphasis on de-escalation techniques. And so, I wish that, that people that feel concerns and fear could see the progress we've made. And that's why I'm, I'm very glad that we do our critical incident, uh, briefing, uh, community briefings. And that's why we released the video to the community, to the public within forty-five days, because I think that, you know, the body worn video shows the efforts that our officers are making out there to, to de-escalate these situations. And I'm very proud that I see in the actual videos, the real-time incidents, that these officers are taking the de-escalation techniques that we have been training them to use and in, in real time, in, 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 you know, in critical incidents where there's a lot of things going on, they're doing the very steps that we have trained them to do. And I think getting that out in the video is, is a good way to, to assure the public and to relieve fears that they might have.
Okay, Chair. Lastly, Madam Chair, oh, sorry, sorry, Commander McConus.
You know, sir, I just wanted to add, one of the things that we started in December from the Office of Operations where we have taken body worn video and what we're training our supervisors in doing, which I think is, 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 is something that is terrific, is we are talking about procedural justice. We have supervisors, um, reviewing video with our GED officers and ultimately, we're going to get it to where it goes department-wide. But one of the important aspects of this, of walking through that radio call, walking through that stop, um, they're usually non-enforcement type of interactions where, where we're taking that whole set of circumstances and having our supervisors and officers talk about giving people a voice, neutrality, listening, making sure that, or, or, or wanting folks, teaching our sergeants and our officers that it's okay to listen to people. It's okay to, to, to have folks ask questions about, about what's happening. That's what we've been trying to do over the last almost six months now, of using that as a tool to teach our, 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 our folks that are on the front lines. It's a different type of policing, but I think it's so important, what we're trying to accomplish here of treating people right. Um, even though there may be an interaction, it doesn't always have to be LAPD way like historically it's been. So, we've taken great strides in that. We're looking at body worn, we're examining different interactions to really hone in on that point about, um, creating that trust and breaking down those barriers. And I know it's not something that we can flip over in one day. This is something that is going to take time. But I think it has to start somewhere and, and, and we've taken an aggressive effort as an organization, identifying the, the concerns, the righteous concerns that our community and everyone has, and really trying to look at that from a different perspective and a different lens, um, to teach our, 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 our officers, our young patrol force and our gang officers that it's okay, you know, you can have conversations with, with, with people and there's nothing wrong with that. So, I just wanted to add that, just, I, I'm sorry for taking that time, but just wanted to make sure that point was made.
No, I appreciate it so much. And, and Madam Chair, there's only one last question, and that is, speaking of interactions, uh, have you all really thought long and hard about use of force or an interaction when someone is stopped because they match the description of a suspect based on a call or based on an incident? Um, we've all probably heard many testimonials, uh, from individuals, mostly black people who have been stopped because they were told they matched the description of a suspect. Um, and some of the testimonials have been really, really disturbing. Uh, and then, and then these folks were found to be, um, a case of mistaken identity and then released. So, where, where does that concern? Where, where does this mitigation of, of something that is, um, really problematic, where does that fit into this conversation?
So, what I can tell you, sir, is, is, you know, in roll calls, when we're providing information to our field forces, there has to be a legal reason to stop, to detain, et cetera. Those conversations, um, are continuous. And I know we have to have a legal right to detain, to stop, et cetera, right? So, what we're training our folks to do, again, this is, this is the new LAPD with training and not arbitrary stops for any type of reason. We're trying to provide our patrol force, you know, um, uh, information from crime reports. We're trying to provide them with real-time, correct information to, that when we do have victims of crime, we do have suspects that are out driving in certain type of vehicles that fit certain types of descriptions, creating wanted flyers with maybe a little more precision than just a carte blanche, male, white, driving a white car. You know, that doesn't do anyone anything. So, we're trained our, we've revamped our, um, our, uh, we call it our area crime, um, intelligence center to where we're taking these things, we're trying to, 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 to give exactness as best we can to, and then talk to our patrol officers about the legality of everything that they do. But I believe it starts on our front lines and then it transitions into the other entities and things that we have working, various types of cases. But the ongoing training, whether it's in, you know, field training officer school, well, it really starts in the academy, but then it goes into our training officers who play a vital role in this piece because they're training our young officers, our supervisors that are monitoring all the way up through the senior management of, of the organization. Just providing better information to our folks that are out there working, I think, can assist in, in, in what you're saying. I don't know if Ms. Rhodes has anything she wants to add because I know she's been looking at, uh, a couple of different things to, to really enhance what we're doing here.
Uh, yeah. Good afternoon. My name is Elizabeth Rhodes. I'm the Director of the Office of Constitutional Policing and Policy. Uh, I think, uh, Councilman Alferro, I, I have, I am a little bit of two minds about your question. One is, yes, it is a very real and, um, visceral concern, um, to the public and therefore to the Police Department. How that fits into use of force, uh, you know, I guess my first response would be, you know, a stop sh- uh, with a mistaken identity shouldn't. Um, but, but having said that, I recognize, uh, that, that members of the public, um, perceive it to be, and often it, it does, um, uh, become some sort of use of force. I would say this, um, to, to your question, uh, we, the LAPD is working and has posted a revised use of force policy on the Board of Police Commissioners website, um, that at least, uh, it's a policy. Um, so I think to, uh, Commander McConus's point, there are many, many things that should be and are done in terms of training and review, uh, and really conversations both internally and externally with the Police Department, um, that are not policies. Uh, and I don't want to discount the incredible, uh, necessity that those kinds of things have. But as a policy, there are, uh, we are attempting to revise our use of force policy, um, with things such as at least keeping track of when a firearm or a gun is pointed at an individual. In that way, I think we start to, uh, determine what is happening out there. I don't know if that helps answer your question at all, but that's about what I've got.
No, I appreciate it. I, I think that there aren't any easy answers right now, but, but the important thing is that we seek to, to get them, um, resolved as best we can. Uh, and, and so, I, I appreciate that response. I just, I remember when I was a very young man, I was at a group of friends, we were all stopped because apparently we fit the description of something that had happened. Um, I wasn't in any fear of my life because I knew that it was a mistaken identity thing. I don't think that a young African-American man could say the same thing. And that's just, I think, what we're all hearing out there in the world right now. And so, I think we should, it, we're, it's incumbent on all of us to take a look through that lens on, on how someone is perceived just because of the way they look and then what kind of interaction that calls for. Uh, that's the kind of, of training and listening and, um, intense, hard work that I think is required at this time. So, that's kind of where, where I was coming from with that, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Alferro. Uh, Mr. Rhodes?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, and, uh, thank you for this report. Um, and, uh, and I just want to say, I, I get, I have introduced a motion for a verbal report specifically on the police response to demonstrators, uh, at Third and Fairfax, in particular, in May thirtieth. And, um, and, but I know today, we are only talking about the investigative review and disciplinary process for force incidents, so I will refrain from asking questions about actual incidents and just go, try to focus on the, on this aspect of it. So, I really thank you for this presentation, um, and I think a lot of my questions were answered, but a few questions I had was, you mentioned about between categorical and non-categorical. Uh, for categorical, to fall into the use of categorical use of force, it's deadly force used or a death when a firearm, firearm is fired or when there's a head strike, right? Is that correct?
Uh, yes, Councilor.
So, yeah, and if it's not, and if, if it doesn't fall into any of those categories, then those areas, then it becomes non-categorical. So, um, so you're telling me a head strike is, uh, is it a baton head strike or, um...
So, for it to be classified as a categorical, it has to be an intentional head strike with a, an impact weapon such as a baton or a device. Um, but it has to be intentional for it to be classified as categorical. If it's accidental, uh, then it becomes a non-categorical unless the person is hospitalized. So, an example of that would be if someone were to fire a beanbag shotgun, an officer aims at the person's torso, which is the primary target area, but, uh, for whatever reason, maybe that person ducks down or whatever, for whatever reason, if, if the projectile were to hit the person in the head, um, if, if that was accidental, uh, and the person was not seriously injured, then that would be investigated as a non-categorical.
So, so if it's a beanbag strike or a baton strike below the head and they still get hospitalized, that would be a non-categorical?
No, uh, any, any use of force whatsoever, if it results in the hospitalization of that person, that becomes a categorical.
Oh, because, because also the level one non-categorical with serious injuries, including bone fracture and other items, so wouldn't that require hospitalization?
Yeah, you, you would think so, but we do have instances where, um, somebody may sustain a fracture, but they're, uh, treated and then released and they're not hospitalized. So, when I say hospitalized, it's only if someone is admitted to the hospital.
I see. And then, um, so when it comes to, um, so, uh, the LAPD does not use rubber bullets, right? Or we do?
Uh, Commander McConus, I'll let you...
Sure. So, so we have, um, a forty-millimeter launcher that, that, that is target-specific, that is rubber bullets, as well as, as well as thirty-seven millimeter rounds that are rubber bullets as well.
Okay.
So, and then we got our beanbag, um, shotgun round as well.
So, those rubber bullets are not, is, that's not considered in the firearm category, obviously?
No, that's a less lethal, um, weapon that is a, um, that is used for violent, aggressive suspects to where it doesn't rise to a level of lethal force, to where it, 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 you know, so say you have an individual, let's say, with a knife or something like that where you can't approach but is violently resisting, then you would, we would want our folks to resort to that type of, of less lethal weapon.
And, and if the less lethal weapon, like, whether it's a beanbag or rubber bullets, if it results in hospitalization, uh, because whether it's a shot to the head or to the body but required hospitalization, it would be considered categorical?
Sure. And let's just say that even if you use, for instance, you, you have a takedown or someone uses body weight and you hold someone down and they're injured and they're hospitalized, that would be a categorical use of force. And then I do want to point out that the Chief of Police at any time can direct Force Investigation Division to handle any use of force that he sees fit. So, it's, it's there, we try to keep it in the different criterias, but sometimes things, you know, need a little bit more investigation and oversight, so that's where Commander Norquist's team is called and they send their team in to investigate.
Okay. So, for vertical categorical or non-categorical, um, um, cases, uh, when do, when do we, the city council, or the person filing the complaint, or the public, uh, get the information on the decision? And, and, yeah, and how do, yeah, when? When and how?
Uh, so, if, if, if it is, um, a, a categorical investigation, uh, that has a related complaint, then that person who made that complaint will be notified in writing, uh, at the completion of that complaint investigation, which would be shortly after the case is presented to the Board of Police Commissioners, uh, or it could be delayed if it results in a, a Board of Rights hearing, which can take an additional matter of time.
So, Councilmember, if I can add too, just, so say we have an incident where you have an individual that, that alleges excessive force, let's just say, and, um, they want to make a, a complaint, um, during a use of, or non-categorical use in forced investigation that where, um, say, Mike McConus is alleging that the officer has used too much force against, against him and I want to make a personnel complaint, then that would be handled with, as a personnel complaint with the facts of the use of force. And then that process, then, and that individual gets notified, you know, within probably eight to nine months, hopefully, of the status of their investigation after interviews, et cetera. So, that is always, so that's another option in the course of this.
Okay, eight to nine months.
Well, because, you know, because of the investigation, so, so we've been, you know, I, I mean, we've tried to put forty-five days at the area, forty-five at the Bureau, and then, um, the, um, Critical Incident Review Division, so they're looking at six to, six to nine months, but a personnel complaint that was attached to that, it, it, it could be sooner or later, but it, but, you know, but you're looking at an investigation, you're trying to make sure that you have all the evidence and all the facts, you know, so these investigations can be handled appropriately and, and, and you have everything you need to adjudicate appropriately.
So, can you just give me an example of a most general case for categorical and non-categorical? Because I know earlier you said it takes forty-five days, uh, for the chief to make a decision, right? Or to first review all the decision, uh, the, the investigation?
Hey, Tim, so I can start out with it, so on a non-cat, let's just say that, um, that officers respond to a radio call and they have to use, um, uh, twist blocks on an individual, um, for a four or five, because they're arresting them for burglary. Um, and that individual is complaining of pain, you know, to, to their arm. A sergeant comes out, the sergeant then conducts his or her investigation. We've given each area, so say it happens at Central Division, that Central Division Sergeant has forty-five days internally with their own personnel to review all the facts of that. That then, that case then goes to the Bureau, which would be Central Bureau, and they have another forty-five days to conduct their investigation and then ship that over to Critical Incident Review, who's the final reviewer... Critical Incident Review, who's the final review authority. In theory, it shouldn't take more than forty-five days, but, but those are sort of the parameters on how a non-cat would be adjudicated and reviewed with those timelines with a little flex in between. I'll let Tim address the categorical.
So categoricals typically take longer than that. Our, our, our goal is to complete our categoricals within eight months, and I know that seems like a long time, but a part of that is waiting for various reports that we get related to the analysis of the evidence. For example, toxicology reports can sometimes take a while. There's quite a bit of analysis of trace evidence, seriology, DNA, fingerprints, even video analysis takes a while to review all the videos, and then we do a lot of interviews. All of that has to be compared and compiled into a written report, and so eight months is our goal for that, to get that up, be prepared for the first level of review, which is the Use of Force Review Board.
Okay. So for, for, obviously for non-categorical, the forty-five days are the max that they could take, but it could obviously be done sooner. But for non-categorical, there is no actual timeframe requirement for stuff?
Well, for non-cat, there is, for categorical, it just depends on Tim's investigation.
Okay. Great. Um, so if I could ask, when it comes to the various incidents regarding the recent civil unrest, I know there have been lots of complaints. Do we know how many complaints came in and how many investigations have been started?
Okay, so that is not, that is being handled by Internal Affairs, so I don't have that many specifics on that, so I'm hesitant to give you a number on that. I will say that, that has been assigned to a task force of investigators, and they're continuing to get complaints, and they're assigning each of those complaints to an investigator. We have forty dedicated investigators as part of this task force, and some of those complaints could potentially be a categorical investigation. For example, if someone was struck in the head and hospitalized, and we are trying to identify those as quickly as possible, but at this point, none of those have been verified as being categoricals. And, and part of the issue, just to let you know how that is going, is we reach out to the complainants, and then we ask them if we can interview them, and some of them don't want to talk to us, or they tell us that they will talk to us after they finish consulting with their attorney, for example. So even though we may have a main person that we've reached out to, we haven't, in many instances, we haven't yet been able to interview them and get details to determine whether or not it's a categorical or a non-categorical or just an excessive force complaint, but we are looking carefully at all of those.
Yeah. And that's the motion that I have entered, and we're waiting for a report on that. I would be surprised that there were no categoricals, because I know there were some head strikes and people who were hospitalized, but I will wait for the full report on that. And that reminds me of one last question, Madam Chair. Uh, I forgot to ask, so for both categorical and non-categorical, after the forty-five days or after everything is done in eight months or the several months after that categorical is done, so does the council or does the Public Safety Committee get notified on these results? What is the, I know if we ask, we can, but is it, what is the actual flow? Does it automatically get reported to the council or?
So I would say with, so, so from my knowledge of the non-cats, it would not, the final review for a non-cat use of force is with the Director of the Office of Support Services, so that would be Assistant Chief Kramala. And then for the categoricals, the Police Commission is the final review, I believe.
And the, the decision of the Police Commission is made public immediately. I'm not sure the mechanism for how the city council is specifically notified, but it is made public after the Board of Police Commissioners makes their decision.
Uh, I know whenever there's a law involved or a settlement is involved, then that's when we get notified, but maybe that is something that we could look into in the tail end. And I'll talk to the, our chair, our chairperson on that process maybe at a later date. So, but for the non-categorical, unless it's specifically asked, it won't necessarily come to be public information then?
Well, actually, Mr. Ruh, if I can, and maybe Ms. Rose can answer that question, but wouldn't that be contained in the after-action report that we've requested?
So I think, ma'am, for, for the non-cats, so just, like, other than, than, than when, for what we just experienced, the after-action report would have all of the information that you're talking about now, but for basic day-to-day police work that occurs when you have a use of force incident, that does not come directly?
No, 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 of course, but I was, to answer Mr. Ruh's question specifically with respect to the event, the series of events that have transpired recently, that, that data should be contained in the after-action report that is requested to this body.
Right, no, I'm just, I know that those incidents for the recent civil unrest will be in the after-action report, which we all requested, but I was just wondering for other instances, yeah, so, and that's something we could, you know, possibly talk offline and figure out how we could maybe get a report, whether it's a quarterly report or something, because I know we get lots of reports like on crimes, crime stats from LAPD, maybe that could be partially included in there.
Yeah, we could.
Yeah, but we could bring that up at another time. But thank you, Madam, Madam Chair.
Thank you, colleagues. I do, Mr. McInnes, I'm not sure if you have?
I'm here.
Oh, did you have any questions or?
No, I just, just appreciate your, your questions today, just, I appreciate the report today. You know, this type of conversation is obviously very, very important. It's important to share our review procedures with the, with the public to show our transparency and so that they understand that, you know, the procedures that LAPD goes through on each of these types of incidents, and so just, thank you both of you commanders for being here today and sharing this with us.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, this is just part and parcel of a long series of efforts and work that we will continue to, to review and reflect and improve upon. So I want to, I want to thank you both for your presentation, it's been helpful. I would also, in addition to that, I just want to make sure that we're also, if you could give me some insight on basically the tracking of where, if there's a disproportionate area in the city where we are seeing more non-cat or categorical both, in terms of where in the city that's predominantly occurring, if there's a, there's a pattern here, if we, if that's been reviewed.
So ma'am, if you can give me a minute, there is a, our Use of Force Year End Review Executive Report, and then our book has that information there. I could find it right now and give that to you if you give me a couple minutes?
Sure.
And Madam Chair, it even includes mapping, which I think is exactly what you're asking for, so we're going to get that for you here.
So, so as I, as I turn to page eighty-nine in the executive report, currently, if you, if you look at the areas, it's broken down by bureaus, so if you look at Operation Central Bureau, there was a total of seven hundred, in two thousand nineteen, a total of seven hundred non-categorical use of force incidents. In Operation South Bureau, there was five hundred and seventy. In Operations West Bureau, three hundred and eighty-nine, and in Operations Valley Bureau, six hundred and sixteen, uh, non-categorical use of force incidents.
Okay, thank you. Um, colleagues, so I'm, I'm not sure if there's any additional questions that we have for the commanders, but I want to thank you both very much for, for, for this conversation, it's been very helpful. I also want to invite members of the public that are listening, that the Police Commission has invited the public comment on proposed changes to the use of, use of force policy, and that comment can be submitted until July seventh of this year, twenty twenty, and you're encouraged to email BAPC Use of Force Policy at LAPD dot online. And again, the website for the Use of Force Policy in its current form is available at the website for LAPD, which is LAPDonline dot com. And so with that, that'll conclude this, this item, and thank you both for answering our questions. This is, you know, again, this is an ongoing part of our, of our process, and we will continue to seek every opportunity to continue to reform and improve upon our processes. And so, thank you both.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Uh... And twelve through seventeen. And so with that, that now brings us to item number four, please, Mr. Kirk.
Item number four, motion, Bonin, Harris, Dawson, Rue, relative to instructing the LAPD to work with the city's official police garages to release all vehicles impounded during the recent civil unrest by requiring payments from vehicle owners.
Thank you. Colleagues, I want to start by first saying that I, I support the motion that was before us that was introduced by our colleagues, Mr. Harris Dawson and Mr. Bonin, regarding the vehicles that were impounded during the civil unrest. Although impounding vehicles during a declared curfew is allowable under the law, I believe the righteous thing to do is to return fees paid to, by vehicle owners that have their vehicles, their vehicles towed during the unrest. The one clarification I want to make is that the funds should be reimbursed only to owners that have their vehicles towed due to curfew violation, not those for criminal violation. So I want to make that clarification. Um, and so with that, I'd like to make the recommendation, colleagues, I don't know if anyone had any comments.
I would like, I agree with you.
Thank you. Mr. O'Farrell, I don't know, Mr. Lee, you're, are you putting it?
Yeah, I was putting my hand up. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, that's great.
I was just moving that clearly, colleagues, I saw Mr. Lee, that's Mr. Rue, guy.
Um, so thank you, Madam Chair, and I, and I, you know, wholeheartedly second that amendment that you made, and you know, I was a seconder in this motion, and this was introduced because we are in a time of incredible economic hardship frustration and justifiable anger, and we don't want to put further economic pressure on people. So, and these impounded vehicles, as we know, could really have significant financial burdens, and this is not the time for that, and we need to help as much as we can. And these colleagues are taking all people peacefully exercising their First Amendment rights, and they shouldn't be punished for that, so I think your amendment is great. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Lee, did you have any?
Yeah, I'm good, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, just, just, I would, I would also argue that the vast majority of those joining the peaceful protest are aware of the curfew as well. That's probably something they just, most folks who assembled peacefully didn't even know about. So I think this is very fair, and I wholeheartedly support your amendment and the reimbursement based on, on that. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, colleagues, I know that we adopt this motion and direct the CAO and LAPD to identify a source of fund within the LAPD budget that can be used to offset these refunds, and I would also like to refer the matter to the first, and the first coming report, to the Budget and Finance Committee. Mr. Kirk, if you would please call the role.
Good, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Farrell.
Aye.
Councilmember Rue.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Thank you. Then I'll bring us to item number five on the agenda, Mr. Kirk.
Item five, Emergency Management Department and Los Angeles Fire Department reports in response to motion, Rodriguez Christ, relative to the Fire Department's response to the COVID-nineteen pandemic.
Thank you. Uh, I see Graham, Chief Everett, thank you for joining us, I don't see Chief Hayden. And, uh, Mr. Freeman, are you available?
Yes, ma'am, I'm here.
Perfect. Um, so what I had, for the side of emergency, by those fire and emergency management, who will now begin their presentation on their respective report?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and honorable members of the committee, Deputy Chief Graham, everyone, the Chief of Staff for Fire Department. With me today, as you mentioned, Chief Pat Hayden and Rob Freeman from EMI, and I just want to touch base, some of the brush fire preparations that we've been doing this year, knowing we have the COVID virus to contend with, we are taking several measures within the Fire Department to prepare for this season, which we anticipate will be a pretty active fire season. Some of the usual preparations that we do are already underway. We have updated our department bulletin for all members, which includes a section specifically about COVID operations during brush fires. In addition to that, just yesterday, we concluded our chief officer's continuing education program along the same topics. These are things that we normally do each year to prepare for the brush season, and, but the added content of how to deal with the COVID virus and what that looks like for us operationally. So in our operations, some of the changes that we will be taking part in, along with our regional partners, a lot of the Fire Departments are doing basically the same thing, is an adoption of a modular one concept, which is basically strictly enforcing company unity and not intermixing resources or crews while they're on the line, obviously to reduce the possibility of exposure, just minimizing that exposure. All of our apparatus will be equipped with seven-day supply of infectious disease kits for PPD, hand sanitizer, and those types of items to assist the members to maintain sanitation during this time. And they've also been directed to staff the rigs with three days of meals ready to eat, which, they're ready to eat, they're not great, but they're edible, but that allows the firefighters the opportunity not to come back to base camp for meals, and it makes them more self-sufficient on the line. We've directed all of our members, obviously, throughout this whole thing, with the social distancing, the face covering, and the practicing of proper hygiene and hand sanitizing. In addition to that, on the front lines, we've made some changes in our incident command posts, and many of the council members have been to the incident command posts and seen what they look like. When we come out to command posts in the future, you'll notice that their spacing will be much more separated to minimize exposure, and also limiting access to non-fire personnel will be taking place as well. Our members will be doing temperature checks twice daily, and we're also going to be assigning safety officers throughout the incident, and they're fully equipped with infectious control disease training to minimize and to make recommendations to the incident commanders on steps that can be taken to minimize that exposure to all people that are involved in the firefighting operation. And as you, as you all know, when we get these large fires, we bring in other agencies from other departments, and so it's not just the firefighters at a particular station who typically live together that we'll be dealing with. We have to take these measures to make sure that we try to isolate folks as much as possible and still get the job done. At this point, I'd like to hand it over to Chief Hayden, and he can kind of explain what we've been doing for brush cleaners in preparation for this brush season with COVID in mind. Pat?
Yeah, thank you, Chief. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the committee, and all in attendance. Again, I'm James Patrick Hayden. I'm the commander over our industrial commercial section, of which we have our brush cleaners unit. So immediately upon recognizing the need to take action with regard to our Safer at Home initiative, we decided it best to try and meet the needs of the public in a number of ways. First and foremost, recognizing that COVID protocol would potentially impact their ability, they being the one hundred and forty-six thousand parcel owners in the very high fire hazard severity zone, may not be able to adequately clear their properties. So because of that and any potential financial... in the very high fire hazard severity zone may not be able to adequately clear their properties. So because of that and any potential financial impact, we moved back the, uh, inspection, uh, season from May first to June first. However, um, we also realized that we may be able to still get quite a bit of traction underway by still going out and recognizing that many of those parcel owners may in fact have been able to complete the, uh, the, uh, requirements for brush clearance. So we did, uh, go out starting on May first solely for the purpose of those, um, successes that would be out there, and we started the actual inspection process June first. Uh, because of that, we were able to have a very, um, uh, impactful, uh, season thus far. We've reached a hundred percent of our initial inspections, actually record time, and given all of the stresses and challenges, to be able to actually pull off something like that, I think is noteworthy and something I'd like to acknowledge the brush clearance unit folks for being able to achieve. We also recognized because of the, um, potential, um, uh, the thirty days, uh, initially for clearance was moved back to forty-five days, and again, that potential for any financial hardships, we had to, uh, take into consideration and thought it best to give our, uh, parcel owners an additional fifteen days to complete, uh, those inspections, I'm sorry, their, uh, clearance efforts. So, uh, we also recognizing that we needed to have some sort of a substantive outreach, uh, program for these, um, purposes. We had an aggressive website and social media campaign, um, uh, put forward to get the word out. We immediately recognized that many of the emails indicating from parcel owners that they were in fact impacted ceased, and, uh, we were able to really concentrate on meeting their needs and making sure that the, the public felt as though we were being responsive to, uh, the COVID situation. Brush clearance contractors have also been, uh, identified as a potential, uh, problematic, uh, part and component of what we do. So we have, um, made sure that all of our contractors are trained and understand all CDC and DHS requirements as it relates to COVID-19, and they are required to sign an affidavit indicating that they will adhere to all protocol. Uh, we also requested and asked they provide porta-potties, uh, some sort of mobile ability to take care of their own personal hygiene needs, uh, to make sure that they are not, uh, spreading and able to, uh, be self-contained and safeguard. Um, we also have looked at our unmanned aerial vehicles or drones and started to implement, uh, unmanned aerial vehicles when, um, appropriate. Uh, that's still somewhat in a beta test form, but that has proven to be very, uh, um, impactful and something that we, we will lean on, uh, as we move forward into the future. Uh, I cannot probably say again that, uh, productivity is at a hundred percent. We have started to look at, uh, given, we're now in that point where we're waiting that forty-five days before we go back out to, uh, ensure that those individuals who are not successful in their brush clearance are in fact successful, and we will just continue from that point moving forward. Uh, we've also had all of our civilian staff, as, uh, we all know, telecommuting, which we were able to stand up appropriately and, um, assist. So I think that's all that I have, Chief. If you'd like to pass it on to EMD or if there are any questions for me.
Well, thank you for that, Chief. I want to thank, and I want my colleagues to recognize that when we go through the brush clearance, uh, some testing, uh, as which, well, so we will, uh, that they will provide additional time and opportunities to clear their lot, uh, and follow the procedures, uh, with, uh, with respect to making sure that we, uh, have the proper practices and that they're doing their, uh, their diligence, that the department can't keep doing over its burden. But, uh, my thanks to the brush clearance unit, and all the men and women of the department, you know, uh, I, I've made some visits to some stations, and, uh, you know, the work that you all are doing on the front lines is COVID testing, uh, you know, we don't have the luxury of saying "not" in my job description. You guys have kept that in mind, but the county has not in the, in the staff. Uh, not to just go, you know, "Oh, not the county, it's, uh, but I better do what you gotta do." Uh, but I want to thank you all for, for your work that, uh, you know, for a district of mine that often times has unfortunately, uh, suffered through some very large fires, uh, this, this is very important, and so I want to thank you for that work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Chair. One, uh, item, uh, do you have Mr. Freeman from EMD on the item as well? If you'd like to hear from him?
Yes, would love that. Thank you, Mr. Freeman.
Uh, thank you, Chief. Uh, good afternoon, Madam Chair and committee members. I'm Rob Freeman, uh, Assistant General Manager for the City's Emergency Management Department. So, uh, we've, uh, provided the committee with a, a report as directed by, uh, Councilmember Rodriguez's motion that focuses on, uh, COVID-19 impacts to wildfire shelter operations. And in order to prepare this report, we not only sought input from LA Fire Department, but from the Department of Recreation and Parks, the American Red Cross, LA Unified School District, Animal Services Department, Department on Disability, those stakeholders that make up our Mass Care Branch of the Emergency Operations Center. So, uh, I'd be happy to touch on a few of the highlights of the report and then answer any questions that you might have. Uh, but we've certainly taken a, a, a serious look at the high potential for a secondary concurrent event while we are in the midst of what's been the longest EOC activation in the city's history. We've been activated for about a hundred days straight. Uh, we're going to keep doing that, but we realize that there's a big potential for other disasters to happen. They're not going to take a break. Uh, the COVID-19 pandemic event has had an impact on shelter operations, as you know. Uh, there are, um, um, more than fifty-one, uh, total facilities that are still available, but, uh, about twenty-five facilities that are presently in use as shelters for persons experiencing homelessness. So we wanted to make sure that Wreckin' Parks had the capacity to still make their facilities available to serve as shelter sites, uh, which they, they have, they've identified those sites for us. Uh, we reached out to the American Red Cross. They have not been, uh, as actively involved with the, uh, PEA shelters as they are for a wildfire shelter, um, but they've, uh, made some recommendations that were incorporated into the report, and they are standing ready to help us. Uh, we've reached out to LA Unified School District because it may be that the best, uh, shelter op, options in a wildfire could be a combination of city facilities and LAUSD campuses. So, uh, they are, uh, standing ready to, uh, help us. Uh, Animal Services has the capability to address, uh, horse evacuations or other animal care and control, uh, facilities, and we work regularly with our Department on Disability to ensure that any shelter operations that are stood up by the EOC, uh, accommodate, uh, the needs of persons with disabilities or others with access and functional needs. Uh, we provided a series of fifteen specific, uh, recommendations that, that touch on some of these issues, uh, uh, in, in order to kind of test our capabilities, we conducted a tabletop exercise, uh, a few weeks ago about this scenario, and we had all these agencies involved, and, uh, it was a good opportunity for us to test out in a, uh, discussion environment, how would we continue staffing and provide shelter operations? And we've got to do two events at the same time, and although, uh, the Protest for Racial Justice events did not involve many shelter operations, it certainly was a challenge for us in the EOC because we had two actual events ongoing at the same time for, uh, four or five days stretch. So we've actually had some practical experience as well as a tabletop exercise, uh, that provided us an opportunity to test our ability to do more than one event, uh, at the time. But, uh, some of the things that we would do with a wildfire, uh, event is that we would move to a twenty-four-seven operation of the EOC. Uh, we would bring in additional staff for our Mass Care Branch. We'd closely coordinate evacuation instructions with LAFD and LAPD, LADOT, the folks that make that decision at the tactical level. Uh, we'd be developing a mass care plan for, uh, for the event. And as I mentioned, uh, we'd be looking at a possibility of local hotels coordinated by American Red Cross as an option, LAUSD campuses, uh, community colleges are an option in a large brush fire, as well as those, uh, more than fifty recreation and parks facilities that, that would be available. Uh, all of these sites, uh, would be impacted by the, um, public health restrictions and COVID-19, uh, safety provision. So, uh, it, it reduces the capacity of what we can do in a site. Uh, it, uh, requires us to have personal protective equipment and, uh, cleaning in place, so, uh, we'd likely have to make use of a number of different facilities options because we simply can't shelter as many people as we had pre-COVID. So it was a great opportunity for us to, uh, address this issue. Those are the recommendations, the basic findings of our report. I'd be happy to answer any questions the committee might have.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman, and, uh, thank you for a comprehensive report. I think it was important to reflect on all the possibilities, given that, I know you all are really stretched right now, given the pandemic, um, but we, in the context of, you know, knowing that many of our recreation and park facilities, which often become the front, uh, front line of evacuation, uh, and given that they were being utilized to the purposes of making accommodations for those experiencing homelessness, I wanted to make sure that we were really kind of mapping out, particularly in areas where, uh, you know, consistently we've had, for example, if you look at my district, I know the, the, uh, first round of, uh, shelters are okay. They're available and, uh, and ready to make that implementation. So given what we saw most recently, uh, about a year or so ago, uh, you know, many of, many of the facilities in the North Valley were at full capacity. And so I'm not sure what the implications of COVID may seem to have been on those locations, but I want to make sure that we've mapped it out, uh, for that potential. And more importantly, uh, because of misinterpretations that have occurred before, particularly with the utilization of and activation of LA Unified sites, it's really important to get that hammered out, uh, in advance of an event, because, uh, you know, that's where a lot of misinformation gets out to the public, and we end up losing value and信誉 and trust from the public in, in a very emotional and, uh, you know, alarming, and I want to encourage you all in those places before that move there. Uh, but with that, I want to go ahead and allow my colleagues, I know they have questions. Mr. Rue?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, uh, you started asking the same questions that I had, um, and I was wondering, uh, in your report, the Valley Bureau estimated that it has a capacity of five hundred and forty-six beds, and, um, based on what our chairperson just talked about, during the last recent wildfires, um, we were at pretty much full capacity. Um, so what, what are we, uh, what are we taking, um, um, uh, actions to make sure that we have, is this enough beds, first off? Uh, I heard this wildfire season might actually be worse, but, um, or, or what other contingency plans do we have to, to try to increase these beds for, uh, shelters?
Uh, Councilmember, we're, uh, looking at all of the available options. So, uh, LAUSD campuses are an option. Uh, we have had LAUSD high school campuses used, uh, previously, uh, and depending on school operations, uh, those are part of our capability. Uh, Red Cross has given us a lot of good advice, uh, in, in some, uh, smaller events, they will provide vouchers for hotel accommodations, so that's something that we're looking at. But one of the new, uh, suggestions they've made is leveraging the capabilities of community colleges, uh, Mission College, uh, for example, in the valley. So we've reached out to our partners there, and it might well be that due to the limited capacity of what Wreckin' Parks can provide, that we need to add one or more of those, uh, capabilities to the event. And we're ready to do that.
Okay, and you know, as our chair stated, because of COVID-19, um, how does that affect the current bed capacity? Um, do you, since you have to, since you have to space more people out, does it reduce the space capacity? And also, are we looking at larger locations, or do we want to look at smaller locations? Or, uh, what, what's the factor there?
Well, it's reducing the shelter capacity to about thirty percent of pre-COVID. Literally, the, that, that's why that number of five hundred and forty-six beds estimated by Wreckin' Parks is fairly low. It, it's about thirty percent of what would normally be available. Uh, some of the other options, uh, whether it, it's a, a high school campus or a college campus, provide, uh, greater capacity. Uh, in a recent brush fire, we had several hundred residents that were sheltered at TAF, Charter High School in Woodland Hills. Uh, but each of these, uh, the capacity is reduced because of the social distancing requirements. Typically about thirty to forty percent of what would normally be the capacity of, of those shelters. So that's why we were looking at an approach that would leverage all possible options.
So what, when you're, in your, in your, um, research and, and your findings, is it better to have larger locations or, um, or smaller locations? Because, um, I don't know, when people are coming into a shelter after a fire, do they want to be, maybe they don't want to be with other people? So what, what are you finding and what do you, what do you think is a better way to go? Finding multiple small locations or, um, just larger halls?
Well, that's, uh, Councilmember, that's one of the reasons why the Red Cross suggested the hotel option, because it does provide, uh, a more of a family-based model. Typically, that's been used for localized incidents like an apartment fire or water main break, so depending on availability, there, there's capacity issues there, but you don't have some of the same concerns in a hotel voucher program that you would in a group environment like a, a gymnasium or, or a school site. Um, but those, uh, those options will still, uh, need to be, need to be taken into consideration depending on, on what the, uh, nature and, and demands of the event are. Uh, all of these would be subject to distancing and personal protective equipment. Uh, we've, uh, had nurses assigned to the shelters established for persons experiencing homelessness, so that we have, uh, onsite public health staff that are there to make sure it's operated in a safe capacity. But, uh, we, actually, the experience we've had with those Wreckin' Park sites that have been in use for several weeks now has been very, very helpful. We found a way to operate them in a safe manner. It's just about thirty percent capacity from what we've done in the past.
Okay, and, uh, and a shifting focus, I know, um, when it comes to COVID-19 testing, LAFD has, are readily accessible if they want to get tested, right? Anytime any firefighter wants a test, they could get a test.
Uh, yeah, the, the, the chief could comment on that, but yes, as far as I know.
That's correct, Councilmember.
So, and what protocols, I mean, God forbid this happens, but if there's a situation where a large number of firefighters or staff is sick and they have to, uh, uh, leave work, are there protocols in place to, uh, contingencies for that, to backfill those positions, or, um, how to spread it out?
Uh, yes, Councilmember, we currently have that in place. Um, we would, uh, have members tested, we would have symptomatic members, uh, evaluated for if they need to be hospitalized and make sure everyone's okay. We would put people off duty, and then we would go ahead and hire behind them, utilizing our, our, um, uh, overtime hiring like we do now. Um, and then we would monitor those members as they go through the return to work, uh, process.
Okay. Um, lastly, is there any, any additional resources that the Fire Department or EMD needs to adequately, adequately prepare for this upcoming wildfire season?
Well, I would say from the shelter op side, Councilman, uh, that, that adequate personal protective equipment, uh, things have gotten better, but it, it remains a concern, and that, um, we, we would likely be, uh, relying on our disaster service worker program as we have for the shelters for persons experiencing homelessness. We have a lot of employees, uh, that, that are telecommuting or are not working, uh, at, at their normal work site, and we've had quite a number of disaster service workers that have helped, have helped out the shelter sites, and that's something that we would look to use for a brush fire shelter as well.
Wait, so are you saying you don't have enough, uh, PPEs?
Well, we do for the operations that we have now, but we would want to provide those supplies for any shelter that we stood up for a wildfire.
Okay.
And, and Councilmember, on the Fire Department's side, uh, you know, we're, we're preparing ourselves for this brush season, and we do every year, but we do have some, um, very, uh, tricky waters to navigate this year with the pandemic, so we're making some adjustments with our operations. Um, supply-wise, we're fine. Um, training-wise, it's been a challenge, but we're getting it done. So we're going to be able to operate safely in this environment and make sure that we minimize exposure to our members as much as possible. So, um, we're, we're moving forward for that date when we anticipate, probably, really, like September first, mid-August is kind, we're, we're targeting some dates as the moisture dries out.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Rue. Uh, Mr. O'Phill, did you have any questions?
Uh, no questions. I just want to thank Chiefs Everett and Hayden and Mr. Freeman for your, uh, collaboration on really getting us more...
on really getting us more ready than we've ever been, probably for any kind of emergency, based on the experience of the last three-plus months. And just really a special shout-out to the brush clearing unit as well. We haven't had the kinds of conflagrations that you've had in the 7th Council District, but we have so many wildfire danger zones in the 13th District. And someone who lives on a hillside myself, brush and the fact that it's kindling every year, potential, you know, the potential for massive fires that spread quickly in our residential areas is very real, and so I can underscore enough the importance of adequate brush clearance. And so as much as people hate getting a late, you know, a notice for being late on clearing their brush, or they get hauled into a hearing and try to resist a fine or a fee, it's really important because we're preventing catastrophes all the time, every year, and that's something you can't quantify. But we understand the incredible service that you do for our neighborhood, so I just want to take a moment to thank you for that. We have the best emergency preparedness, emergency management department in the country, I think. And so between LAFD and EMD, we're in really good shape, and that's because of the dedication and professionalism of the men and women in the departments. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Councilman. Appreciate it.
Madam Chair, so my question is just to Mr. Freeman. Mr. Freeman, you said that we're currently looking to options for like schools and, you know, some of our, some of our emergency rec centers are now being used for other purposes, and that were, I believe you said 30% capacity. I mean, please feel free to reach out to our offices. We need, you know, I have the feeling that we need to start locking down some of those sites, you know, for emergency beds, because I know that, I know Councilmember Rodriguez and I both went through this. Our shelters filled up extremely quickly last time, and they were all utilized, and so I don't want to just be, you know, be caught without being prepared for that. So please feel free, because we're happy to help locate, you know, different churches and, you know, reach out, reach out to us if we can help in any way.
Thank you, Councilman. We will definitely do that. Appreciate your help.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Thank you all very much. I appreciate that you guys did a great job. Very comprehensive report. Mr. Freeman, the recommendations are outstanding, and I think we just need to help facilitate getting those, getting those plans ironed out and, you know, in the event. Hopefully, we won't have one, but unfortunately, as I keep telling everybody, we're hot in the 7th District. We are well-practiced with this stuff, unfortunately, and, you know, it's always at the top of mind and, you know, and Graham, I just want to say, I've had those rations before. My father made me eat those rations before, and God help our firefighters for having to eat that. It's the worst thing ever, but if you're hungry, it'll do. But perhaps we'll, you know, postmortem of pandemic and whatnot, we will find some alternatives that we provide on the ring. That would be helpful. But wouldn't that call, would you like to move that we note and file these reports? I want to thank you all very much. This is very helpful and glad to know that we're all kind of just still working in the same, you know, growing in the same direction to make sure that we're prepared, given the circumstances that we're living through right now. So thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, if you want to go ahead and call the roll for the note and file?
Yes, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Farrell.
Aye.
Councilmember Rue.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Thank you. And now that brings us to item number 11. I know we have a technical amendment. Mr. Clerk?
Okay. First off, item number 11, Board of Fire Commissioners Report Relative to the Acceptance of the Fiscal Year 2019 Federal Emergency Management Agency Urban Search and Rescue Task Force Cooperative Agreement Grant. It has been brought to my attention that there's a desire to amend, to I believe, remove recommendation number seven in the Commissioner's Report. That would be for the addition of a management analyst. It turns out they do not want to proceed that way, if I have that correct?
Madam Chair, Chief Everett again. That is correct. I do have the Commander of Disaster Response Section on the line. Chief White, if there are any questions about that item.
I don't believe there's any questions, but I think we're inclined to adopt that recommendation, 1 through 6 and 8 through 12, the Board of Fire Commissioners Report. And that's prices. Mr. Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Oh, yes. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Farrell.
Aye.
Councilmember Rue.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Terrific. Thank you all very much. And now that brings us to item number 18.
Item number 18, Motion Rodriguez-Buscaino Relative to Expanding the Through Our Eyes Program Partnership and Related Matters.
To help you understand some of what this item is related to. Through Our Eyes is a budget, is a budget item that's currently being considered in Budget and Finance Committee, but I wanted to take an opportunity to help provide some context. There was a lot of misinformation out there about what this program entails. Through Our Eyes is a community-driven program that came out and developed out of the Ramona Gardens community in Royal Heights by youth in that community in an effort to help build better relationships with the officers that were assigned to the Community Safety Partnership. It's, the motion that I introduced earlier this year calls for LAPD to find the funding within their budget to continue this, to continue and expand this program. As many of you may or may not know, I just recently opened a CSP site in my district at the San Fernando Gardens, making sure that we're helping to foster more productive engagement between the youth of our communities and the Los Angeles, members of the Los Angeles Police Department. I think it's paramount and a reflection of what we're all talking about at critical times. Mr. Lee, you're not muted. So in 2017, LAPD partnered with Legacy LA, which is a community-based nonprofit organization that services the Ramona Gardens community, to develop the Through Our Eyes program. It includes a series of youth-led workshops that address the tensions between living in the housing developments and law enforcement. In 2018, Through Our Eyes was awarded a grant from State Farm to ensure its continued success, but the program hasn't received funding since. Investing in youth and building the productive relationships between our police officers and our communities helps to create a safer neighborhood and better future for everyone. And it's programs like Through Our Eyes that I believe are part of a constructive way that we can build better relationships between the youth of our city and our members of our law enforcement community. So with that, while the Budget and Finance Committee considers the similar motion and continues to deliberate on the reduction and reinvestment efforts with respect to the Police Department's budget, I would ask that we continue the motion without objection, so that we can continue this conversation and have it advanced through the Budget and Finance Committee. So with that, if there's no objection?
No objection.
For instance, Mr. Clerk, will call the roll? Our meeting is adjourned.
Recording stopped.